I'm going to call the Butte Silver Bowl Council of Commissioners regular meeting for Wednesday, February 5th, 2020, to order. We have roll call, please.
We have eleven present and one absent.
Let the record show that Commissioner Morgan is excused this evening. Commissioner McDonough, would you lead us in the prayer and the pledge, please?
Almighty God, we implore you to come upon us and guide us this night as we make decisions which shall greatly affect our community of Butte Silver Bowl. Direct our thoughts, words, and deeds that will please you, Ambassador of our fellow citizens and our people. With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now is the time for any public comment on any items on the consent agenda. John.
Thank you. My name is John Ray. I live at 915 West Galena.
Right on the bottom of the microphone, there's a, there you go, it's on.
Good, it was very little button. Anyway, thank you. My name is John Ray. I live at 915 West Galena. And I simply wanted to make a few framing comments regarding the presentation you're going to hear in a few minutes about the meconium studies in Butte and about the health studies that seem to be coming out every two weeks in Butte indicating this, that, or the other thing in regard to the Superfund cleanup. I think one thing with all the issues that Superfund is discussing these days, a consent decree coming out soon, the pole plant is starting its public comment period on the 10th. This issue of public health and the degree to which Superfund has or has not been effective in protecting the public's health from exposure to the contaminants of concern is a critical, if not the critical question, I think, facing the community. Years and years and decades have been spent on this cleanup, hundreds of millions of dollars have been spent on it, and asking the question about whether or not that cleanup has been efficacious is an important question. It's a difficult question because one of the problems is tracing any particular health outcome to any one or two particular contaminants. It's very, very difficult to do. But the approach that I would suggest that the Commission could take in looking at all of this is to use what is sometimes referred to as the precautionary principle. Even if there isn't absolute certainty, even if there isn't an absolute causal link between one contaminant and one health outcome, the advice would be to err on the side of caution and to take the most cautious approach possible. That leads me to the final point that I want to make is that to me, with all the health studies and everything else, the one question that can be asked that kind of cuts through all of this is, are we missing anything? Is there anything being done in the cleanup today that isn't working properly? Is there an area that we're missing? Because if we're doing the best that we can, you can't legitimately expect to do more or do better. And even though there is uncertainty with all of these health studies, and in a few minutes you're going to hear from Mr. Charles Partridge from the EPA in Denver, who's very, very competent in the information that he presents, but it's a matter of controversy in the public today. What is the public to believe? And that's why I would think that one thing the Council can do would be to ask the question, are we missing anything and what can we do to help end the confusion? One thing that I'm excited about is the new Health Advisory Committee that's starting in Butte that I think will go a long way in providing an independent, unbiased, and competent voice in helping to deal with the confusion that we see, I think, in the public mind. One final thing that I want to do very briefly is that a number of you are new to the Council over the last year or so, and I do have something I want to distribute. A few years back, Bob Moller, who was the Community Involvement Coordinator for EPA, and I did a little brochure called Be Contaminant Smart, because whatever happens in terms of the Superfund cleanup, toxic waste will remain in Butte. It's not all going to be sent out of town. But there are things that individuals can do to protect themselves and their families that are not that honorous in protecting themselves from the toxic that remain behind. And I think this is an important part of the protective feature of the cleanup, and so particularly since some of you are new, some of you may have seen this before, I'm quite proud of what we produced. It's been distributed now to over 12,000 people in the area. We actually even, although it didn't relate to them, were asked to come and speak in Dillon about it, although they don't have a Superfund site, and my understanding is that it's under consideration to do a version of this in Anaconda. What I think we're going to be working on in the next year or so, or the next few months, is sort of Be Contaminant Smart 2 that will update some of this information. But anyway, I'm going to close now. I'll probably be back when you have the hearings on the consent decree, because I think that's going to be an exciting time when you discuss the consent decree for priority soils. But I thank you for this opportunity to speak, and let me distribute these. Thanks again.
Thank you, John. I think there are no. Hey, Ed.
I'm Senator Vander Robb, 2601 Grand Avenue, President of the Greeley Neighborhood Community Development Corporation. I explained the other week that that means my comments have been passed by the Board of Directors. I was classified this morning as the local alarmist. So I will continue to be the local alarmist. Reference Committee of the whole report, 11, Communication 2020-26, requesting a brief presentation regarding EPA's review of the recent cross-section pilot project that identified high levels of hazardous to human health heavy metals in newborns' first fecal excretions and samples collected in Butte. We, the Greeley Neighborhood Community Development Corporation, Inc., are not saying that there is an EPA or DEQ or even a Butte Silver Bowl qualifying health emergency in our community due to human exposure to hazardous to human health heavy metal contaminants present in Butte Silver Bowl. We are concerned, however, that we now have five independent studies that indicate we do have low levels of hazardous to human health contaminants present in the water, the soil, the buildings, and the air. We have multiple samples testing, tested at three locations, and one sample tested at two different locations where we found airborne heavy metals. We are concerned that the people, that these heavy metals are probably coming from the natural ore load, from 140 years of historic mine waste deposits, and from the active open pit mining. Each morning when we leave our vehicles out, we have to wipe off the dust, the alleged dust, excuse me. We are concerned that people are dying at a rate from diseases associated with heavy metal exposures faster in the greater Butte Silver Bowl community, not just in the priority soils area, Superfund area, than they are in all other counties in Montana. And we are ingesting and accumulating these hazardous to human heavy metals contaminants in our bodies in larger quantities than in other locations. The recent independent studies related to hazardous to human health heavy metals contaminants present in Butte Silver Bowl do not show enough people dying fast enough, nor the concentrations of contaminants of concern or other heavy metal contaminants and their interactions that have negative effects on human body are great enough to qualify for a health emergency. But the independent studies indicate that we should be concerned and working together to do whatever is possible to minimize human exposure to hazardous to human health heavy metal contaminants present in our community. Therefore, we submitted, the Greeley Neighborhood Community Development Corporation, this list of concerns to the Butte Health Department and to the Butte Health Studies Committee for their consideration and action. We are asking, may we all work together in a holistic manner to make the greater Butte Silver Bowl community a safer, healthier place in which to live and work? We feel that a good place to start, for the EPA, DEQ, and Butte Silver Bowl Health Study Committee to start, would be to ask themselves the question, when it is generally understood that both water and air flow, why do we have about 250 test wells for contaminants in the groundwater and only one test station for contaminants in the air? The Health Department says we don't have any contaminants in the air. As a member of the group of alarmists from our neighborhood that I represent, we are tired of eating and breathing that alleged dust. Thank you.
Thanks, Ed. Any other public comment on any items on the consent agenda? Mark.
Mr. Chief Executive, members of the Commissioners, I do, I do have enormous respect for Mr. Vander Robb, and particularly his energy. I hope I have.
Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name's Mark Thompson. I'm the Vice President of Montana Resources, Environmental Affairs Vice President. Like I said, I have a lot of respect for Mr. Vander Robb and his energy, and I hope that I can sustain energy levels that long as well. But I do feel that we need to, we need to consider some of the victories that we've had here in Butte. Recent air monitoring for PM 2.5 shows the lowest ever observed in Butte. Recently, DEQ has developed a petition to have Butte removed from the PM 10 non-attainment status. That removal takes about a decade's worth of data collection. That, that has been done, and we are in attainment with PM 10 standards, something many communities in Montana cannot say. Missoula, Billings, both sides of us, non-attainment areas, and they can't demonstrate attainment. We can. That petition will go to EPA, and it is very difficult to get removed from a non-attainment status. We have the data, DEQ is going to pursue it, and that is a victory. Between the recent monitoring of PM 2.5 standards, or monitoring of PM 2.5, and this non-attainment removal petition, this is an indication that Butte has the best air quality it has ever had since air quality has been monitored in Butte. Now, there are studies out there, we're going to hear about some, or one, one of these studies, and some problems with these studies. We know that there is no study that is conclusive, but instead of focusing on the concerns and the doubt that put a blemish on this community, let's not forget to celebrate the victories that this community is also experiencing, and, and make sure that that helps us look like a healthier community, which it should. And these are facts. They're not innuendos or speculation, these are facts supported by data. A lot of these other studies are not supported by data collected specifically in Butte. So let's not lose sight of the victories in the shadow of doubt, because these victories are real, and they do present improvements to human health in Butte community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Any other public comment on any item on the consent agenda? Seeing none, we move for the approval of the minutes of the January 22nd, 2020 meeting. Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I move to approve the minutes from the January 22nd, 2020 meeting.
Second. We have a motion made in second to approve the minutes of the January 22nd meeting. Is there anything on the question? Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? The clerk, please record the vote.
Eleven yea and zero nay.
Motion carries. Under Items Not Addressed on the Agenda, we do have one communication that we have to suspend the rules to place on tonight's agenda, Communication 2020-73. Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. In accordance with the provisions of Section 6 of Rule 6 of the Rules of Business of the Council Commissioners of the City and County of Butte Silver Bowl State of Montana, the Council hereby finds that an emergency condition exists which requires that the Council rules be suspended to allow Communication 2020-73 to be added to the agenda of the regular meeting of the Council, and the reason for this suspension is as follows. This communication is a communication with Public Works Director Mark Neary, requesting Council authorize that Chief Executive has signed Amendment Number 1 to the Agreement with Water and Environmental Technologies Regarding the Stormwater Master Plan. This communication was submitted by the deadline for the items to be placed on the February, I believe that should be 5th, 2020 agenda, but was inadvertently left off such agenda. Based upon the foregoing, and in order to allow this matter to be acted upon, the Council hereby finds that emergency exists which requires a suspension of the Council rules to add this to the agenda to tonight's meeting. So at this time, I would move to approve the suspension of the rules to consider placing Communication Number 2020-73 on the agenda at tonight's regular meeting.
Second. We have a motion made in second to suspend the rules to place Communication 2020-73 on tonight's agenda. Is there anything on the question? Will everyone, oh, Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chief Executive Palmer. I assume we will find out what Amendment Number 1 is when we get to this communication.
I'm sure you will.
Thank you.
Anything further on the question? Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? The clerk, please record the vote.
Eleven yea and zero nay.
Motion carries. We'll handle that communication at the end of the consent agenda. Next, under the Chief Executive's report, I would just like to say that we had the tax sale today, and we had a lot of luck selling property, and we are no longer the owners of the Budget Motel, which is a great thing. And the deed was transferred last Friday for 40 East Broadway, another great thing. So we're moving along here, getting rid of the property that we no longer needed. And under the Chief's, Chief Executive's report on Superfund, we're told that the CD should be coming up quickly, so hopefully just pay attention to some important announcements hopefully coming soon. See, under Bid Openings, Public Hearings, and Presentations, we have one presentation tonight, Communication 2020-26, Nikia Green, Remedial Project Manager, U.S. EPA, Region 8, Montana Office, requesting Council of Commissioners time on the February 5th, 2020 agenda for a brief presentation regarding EPA's review of the recent cross-section pilot study in the Butte and Columbia titled "Meconium: Identified High Levels of Metals in Newborns from a Mining Community in the U.S." Nikia, the floor is yours. And Charlie.
And as Nikia is handing out some of the materials, my name's Charlie Partridge. I'm a toxicologist with the Environmental Protection Agency out of Denver, Colorado. I'm glad I have it in front of me.
I was supposed to introduce him.
Thank you, Chief Exec, Executive and Board Members. My name's Nikia Green. I'm a remedial project manager for the Environmental Protection Agency. I manage rocker, Butte Priority soils, and Butte mine flooding. Additionally, I also manage Westside soils, which we haven't defined a boundary, but it's outside of Butte. So just about everything with Butte. And here in the fall, there was some concern, there was a study that came out, the meconium study is, I'm going to call it for short, and there was a lot of press in the paper. Some of that press was that Butte had a potential public health emergency. Now, when EPA sees that, and we're in a Superfund site, we take it very seriously. And so it's part of my job to do our due diligence on determining what's going on, right? Is our remedy the right remedy? Is there something we missed, like Dr. Ray referred to? So tonight, we're going to focus, and Charlie's going to focus strictly on this meconium study. There's a lot going on in Butte, you know, CD coming out, ROD amendment, medical monitoring study just came out yesterday in draft final form. That's the, that's the study to look at bio-monitoring data for blood lead levels here in Butte under the RMAP program. And then there's additional studies like the brain cancer study and, and others that, others had, have referred to. Tonight, we're focusing on the meconium, and I think what you'll see is clear evidence that there is not a public health emergency here in Butte based on fetal matter of, of babies. So with that, I'll let Charlie present.
Thanks, Nikia. So I'll, I'll try to be as descriptive as I can. I know it may be hard for the audience to see some of the presentations, but electronic copies are available, and I'll, hopefully it'll be fairly self-explanatory as I, I walk you through. Just to, to start you off, what is meconium? Meconium is the first bowel movement of a newborn post-birth. And so the research group comprised of researchers, it was a team of three researchers, one researcher is from here in town, Montana Tech, and then two researchers for, from university in Columbia, South Carolina. And they collected this first bowel movement or meconium from infants in Butte, and then infants in South Carolina. The hypothesis was that the infants in Butte would represent, and, thank you, the infants in Butte would represent the so-called exposed population, a potentially exposed population, and the infants in, in the meconium from the infants in South Carolina would represent a control. They, they were not associated in Columbia, South Carolina, they were not associated with the Superfund site or any excess environmental exposures that they could identify. So this study came out in December 2019, along with a, an article in the Standard in the headlines, and, you know, it was essentially, you know, when you got down into the text of the, the article in the Standard, that there were a thousand times difference between metals shown in the infants of the meconium in Butte versus the infants in South Carolina. And, you know, that, that And, you know, that, that caused quite a concern, a thousandfold is a lot, especially biologically speaking. And so EPA, you know, made a commitment at that time, once we saw that the study came out, that we will review all new information concerning, you know, public health or environmental studies which may be related to the Superfund. And then our administration, my management, also made the commitment, you know, that we will work with our federal and state partners to review this 2019 study to determine if any further studies are needed. We wanted to see, you know, what's exactly going on. We need to really kind of dig into that. And unfortunately, Myconium is not a biological matrix that's well-studied, it's not often studied. And so, our, our first order of business is really to, to see what is known. And so, I, I want to make sure, you know, that it, it's clear, we're not doing anything on this study that we wouldn't do if it was my study that was published in the literature or, you know, if another government and agency published this same study and noted these vast differences in the two study populations. EPA would be doing the same thing, you know, scrutiny of data that have, you know, health implications is standard practice. And our initial review of the data suggested that there, for some reason, the, the South Carolina data seemed lower than the data that we were able to find in the literature. So we, we wanted to investigate it further. And what that was, it was really an extensive literature review to see what's been published about Myconium and metals in infants and to see really where the, the Butte infants and the South Carolina infants fall in that historical literature. And then we also wanted to see, are there any benchmarks for Myconium to where, in what I say, what I mean from benchmarks, if you see such and such levels of copper, it can equal adverse health effects in the infant. And so we were just trying to really determine what the universe of, you know, Myconium and So, a, a little bit of background, and, you know, I don't want to belabor this too much, but, you know, why are metals detected in Myconium? Well, copper, manganese, zinc, the three metals that the paper, the 2019 paper centered on are essential micronutrients. They're required for normal human function development, fetal development. The absence of those coppers, manganese, and zinc can have and cause adverse health effects. In fact, most prenatal vitamins, they have copper, iron, zinc, they even have chromium. There's even molybdenum in prenatal vitamins. I was surprised by, by that as well. And so, there, there's FDA recommended values for people to, to take in vitamins, and they're, they're quite high. So when there's an essential micronutrient, when there's something that the body uses and needs, the, the human body has a, a very well-defined and oiled machinery to where they can handle excess fairly well. So they can handle some of the deficits, but they also can handle excess of the essential micronutrients. If you look here on the presentation, under FDA values on Slide Four, you can see copper, the required daily values is two milligrams. Manganese, two milligrams. So that's just the required daily allowance. There's upper tolerable daily allowances, and that's what you can see in some of like the prenatal vitamins and then also in some of the supplements. That can be as high as ten milligrams of copper are acceptable under FDA regulations. So, you know, the human has this amazing capability to handle these micronutrients. And there, you expect to see them in the baby's Myconium. The mother needs them for function, the fetus needs them for normal development. So seeing these metals in the Myconium, expected, seen worldwide. Just to give you a brief overview of what, you know, kind of these three, and I'm focusing on copper, manganese, and zinc. So manganese, like I said, essential for proper fetal development. Excess manganese, if you have too much, you can increase the risk for preterm delivery. And if you have too little, then you can have growth retardation of the fetus and lower birth weight. Looking at copper, again, it's an essential micronutrient. It's required. You're going to see it. You'll see it in the mother, you'll see it in the fetus, you'll see it in the infant, you'll see it in the, the child, you'll see it in any human being. Copper is an essential micronutrient. Elevations of copper, now copper elevations is really rare because the body's really well-equipped to handle excess loads of copper. So really, the only time we see excess levels of copper occurring in adults or even infants or fetuses is due to a genetic defect, something called Wilson Disease. So elevations of copper are really, really rare. Deficiencies during pregnancy of copper can have serious consequences in both short-term and long-term. Last one, and then I'll kind of start getting a little bit into the data. Zinc, again, essential micronutrient, essential for fetal development. Prenatal zinc supplementation is recommended. It can significantly lower the risk of preterm birth. Deficiency of zinc during pregnancy can lead to stillbirth, neural tube defects, and other different disorders. So, what, what I'm trying to get at here is that copper, manganese, and zinc, totally normal to see in these Myconium levels. And in fact, the profound absence of copper, manganese, and zinc would leave, lead to adverse health effects. So what else, in, a little bit of other background, what else can influence the concentrations in newborns? So, the, the two studies that this, the McDermott Research Group did, they collected the Myconium from, they essentially got a call from the, the hospitals saying there's a birth going on, and then they would activate and, you know, then they would obtain verbal consent from the mother, you know, can we collect the, the Myconium? And then they would go and they'd collect it and then take it back to the lab and for storage and analysis. Now, they collected no demographic data for the infants, for the mothers, or any demographic information at all in both Butte and South Carolina. We don't even know if these infants or if these mothers were from Butte. They could have just been driving through, went into labor, they could have been from California. They collected no data or background history or demographic information about these mother-infant pairs. So, we really, we really don't know where they're from. You know, the, you know, to be realistic, they, they were probably from the, the area. But we don't know. And there's a lot of things demographically that can affect these levels of metals, just to list a few. Maternal age, if you don't know the mother's age, you know, that goes into an unknown. It can affect the levels of copper, manganese, and zinc. Infant gender, we don't know if, if all the children in the Butte study were boys, all the children in the South Carolina study were girls, that can have pronounced effects and account for some differences that you see between the two populations. Smoking status, the season that the child was born has an effect. Gestational age, you can see that, you know, the difference between, a few weeks between twenty-eight weeks versus thirty-eight, you can have up to a fourfold difference in manganese. So if you don't have the background data, if you don't have the information on the mother and the child, there are other effects that could help explain why we're seeing differences between two populations. So being blinded to the study population is just one concern that, and one confounder that may cause a problem. So, we, we saw the, the study, you know, came out in 2019, wasn't really familiar with Myconium. I'd only experienced Myconium twice, and that was during my child, child's two births of my son and my daughter. It's not a well-studied biological matrix. And so, we had to really become familiar with what the breadth of the scientific literature was. So we did an extensive literature review of seventeen studies that we could identify that dealt with Myconium and the metals, and this spanned all the way from twenty, 2019 down to, I think, nineteen sixty-six. Those seventeen studies that I mentioned that we include in our literature review also included the three studies that the research team included, and that's the Canadian study, which I'll refer to as the MERRIQ study. That study is really one of the better, most well-controlled study of Myconium. It's the largest by far that we were able to identify. Approximately sixteen hundred mother-infant pairs were looked at. Then there was a Pakistan study, Aziz, and then the, a Turkor study from Turkey. And so, you know, I, I do talk about the MERRIQ study, and that stands for Maternal Infant Research on Environmental Chemicals. It was, starting back in 2007, it was a Health Canada, a nationwide effort where they collected information from mother-infant pairs across ten Canadian cities. They collected pretty much any biological matrix that you could think of, breast milk, blood, urine. If it was collectible, they collected it. And Myconium was one of those matrix, just because it was an opportunist, opportunity to collect. The, the, really, the purpose of this goal wasn't really, of, the MERRIQ study wasn't to look at metals, but they did analyze for some metals, but they were really looking at environmental exposures to other chemicals and also tobacco. And since the, the study was pseudo-randomly, it's mothers and children or infants selected across ten cities in Canada, they didn't select, you know, contaminated versus uncontaminated. It gives you essentially a snapshot of what a typical infant metals levels would look like, absence, you know, any kind of Superfund site. And so that really gives you an idea of what, you know, a typical child levels of metals would be. So it, it's a good comparison for a controlled population. Here, when I, so we're, we're looking at seventeen studies across almost fifty years. Now, these studies were done for different reasons, you know, they reported out different things. Some were looking at exposed populations versus controlled populations, some were just a survey of what are the typical levels in Myconium in general. And since there, you know, there's all these seventeen studies, in order to do a, a fairly, to make the comparison easier, we just converted everything into a, a standardized unit. So we took whatever units were in, whatever the paper were, and we converted it into parts per million or micrograms per gram. So when you see, there, there's a, we provided you this large handout that has a lot of data on, of all seventeen studies. So when you look at this, all the, the units presented are in parts per million, so you really don't have to worry about doing any kind of conversions or anything, everything's presented as uniform as possible. And this, looking at conversions and assumptions, so since these studies were, for various reasons, you know, over fifty years, from different research groups, different countries, different continents, they reported things out in different ways. The, the Haylor study, or McDermott study, was, they presented the results as wet weight. And that means they essentially received the diaper with the Myconium sample, and then they were run from, for analysis. Almost all the other studies that we receive, that we looked up, they reported out as dry weight. So they essentially, when they received the, the sample, they dried it and then they did the analysis. So there, there can be some differences between if you analyze it while it's wet or if you analyze it with, when it's dry, and it's a fairly standard procedure. It's like, even with soil, you, you can have a wet weight analysis, but then you can, you know, stick it in a, a dryer, and then you can do a, a dry weight analysis. So the, the procedure is fairly well-established. So we did a conversion for the McDermott study from wet weight to dry weight, since everything else, almost all the other studies were presented as dry weight, that just made the comparison, you know, across all the studies easier. And when you go from wet weight to dry weight, that can change the, the difference in the results three to fourfold. And so we, we did that conversion, we applied the, that equation, and then we present the data as both wet weight and dry weight. But if you are looking at the tables, Nikia, you want to see if you can circle the dry weight?
I cannot.
You cannot? Okay. So if you look at, starting from the left-hand side, you have four columns that are shaded in gray. The first one on the left is the Butte wet weight, the second one is the dry weight, the third one is the Columbia, South Carolina wet weight, and then the Columbia, South Carolina dry weight. And then you have, oh, thank you. And so those, so when you're looking at the, this table, and I'm not going to go over because it's, it's really involved, but you can look at it, you know, at your own leisure when you're trying to fall asleep. You want to compare those two columns to all the other results. And that way, you're really comparing apples to apples as, as much as we can. And then we can skip the next slide as well because that's just a continuation of this table here. And, you know, I know that the table is, you know, really hard to, to follow, and so we've taken these results that are in the table form and have put them in graphical form, which I think makes things so much easier for people to visualize. And if you could go to Slide Fifteen, please? Thank you. And again, and kind of the, the same, yeah, that's, that's fine, the same format, the, you want to compare the second column where, where it has dry weight, Butte DW, and then you want to compare the fourth column, which is Columbia DW. Those are the, the dry weight conversions. So here, when we're looking at manganese, we had a total of eight studies. So remember, we have a universe of seventeen studies, however, they didn't all analyze the same metals. So only eight out of the seventeen studies analyzed for manganese. And fortunately, the, the MERRIQ Canadian study was one of them. And so, if you look at that green line that is present, that is going through the median number for the Butte infant data. And if you just followed across all eight studies, the, the Butte data falls within the range that's been reported. What's noticeable and uncharacteristic is that the manganese data for the South Carolina Myconium is lower than anything that's been reported in the literature. One thing I do want to note is that this is a log scale, so the difference between the green line and the red line is about a thousandfold. If you look on the, the back of this handout that I provided you, the top three are the log scale. scale, and then the bottom three, I just created the linear scale. Everybody's familiar with the linear scale, so some people like to see it just to put it in perspective. But the fold differences are so great, when you look at it in the linear scale, it really, it's hard to really see the differences. And so, when you're looking at fold changes, you know, up to a thousandfold difference between two, the log scale really helps you visualize. So, what does the results for the manganese, the difference between that red line versus the green line? Excuse me. Well, it means that, looking at, compared to those eight studies, the Canadian study, which is really kind of the best study out there, the Butte concentrations of myconium for manganese is really kind of where you would expect it. The Columbia concentrations, the Columbia, South Carolina concentrations are a thousand times lower than anything that's been reported in the literature. The South Carolina results are much lower than Butte or anywhere else. And remember, one of the criteria that they had for the infants to participate in the study is that they were healthy. So, if they had any abnormal presentation, any complications, then they couldn't participate in the study. And if you look at the manganese data, and you remember from earlier slides, you know, there can be health implications if you have an extreme absence of these essential micronutrients. So, it's perplexing, and we don't know the reason why the Columbia, South Carolina data is uncharacteristically low. These results essentially continue for copper. Go ahead and put the red and green up there, the next line. Thank you. Again, the green line goes through the median of the Butte infants' myconiums for copper. The red line goes through the median of the South Carolina infants' copper levels. This time, instead of eight studies for copper, we have, I think it was twelve. There's twelve studies that analyze for copper. And so, you look at the mean for Butte is about twenty-eight. The mean for Columbia, South Carolina, zero point zero one. It's, the Butte data, again, like manganese, is right in the range of what's been reported in the literature. The Columbia, South Carolina data, it's low. It has, we haven't seen levels, we haven't been able to identify these levels. We had also, you know, so, we've had some conversations between the research groups and ourselves, and in their, the research paper, they make a statement that the levels that they see in the South Carolina data are comparable to what they have in the literature, and then they list a reference. We looked at those three references, we looked at that individual reference that they referenced in their paper, and we couldn't find it. We asked them direct, you know, can you tell me the sentence, the page, the paragraph, where this statement is coming from? And unfortunately, we haven't heard back from them. We couldn't find it, and we pulled up the three papers that they do reference, and we couldn't find support for that statement. On to zinc. Thank you. Again, similar results. Green line going through the Butte dataset, and again, here we have twelve studies to compare for copper levels in myconium. The South Carolina data, again, uncharacteristically low when compared to those other twelve studies that reported on zinc. Butte, around one hundred and nine. South Carolina, point zero five. Butte concentrations are around the levels that you would see. Some studies are higher, some studies are lower, but there's definitely not a thousandfold difference between, like the Canadian study and Butte. There may be, and, you know, it's hard to tell right now because it's on the log scale, yeah, there may be five or tenfold differences. What we don't know is that because there are no reference levels for myconiums to associate with health effects, and because the body can, and the fetus can handle excess levels of these micronutrients, we don't know if there's a fivefold difference in copper between one infant's myconium and another. There's no benchmark for us to say, yes, at this level, the infant has a possibility of adverse health effects. Whereas with blood lead, with, you know, blood in general, urine levels, you know, even some hair, we have some national criteria and national reference levels that we can compare it to, and we can at least say, you know, for the United States population, you're at average, you're below average. Unfortunately, those, that dataset, those benchmarks, just don't exist for myconium. So, yes, even though there may be some slight differences, you know, between Butte and some of the others, we can't attribute any health effects to that. And when we, some of these studies, I want to say, some of these studies, like the Pakistan study, the Manila study, and then also the Turkish study, they did something similar where they looked at what they called an exposed, highly industrial area versus an unexposed area. And so, we're only presenting the data from the control part of that study. And even when we're looking at, and these are really, really highly exposed areas, third-world nations a lot of times, you know, where children, you know, are, you know, we can tell that they're having adverse health effects, you know, to these metals. Even when you're looking at the comparisons between these really highly exposed populations, and a lot of times they're still using leaded gas in these communities. The different, the greatest difference that we could see was around between twenty and thirtyfold difference. Nowhere in the literature were we able to find greater than a hundredfold difference. Usually, it was just around a twentyfold difference when you're looking at an exposed population versus a controlled population. So, a thousandfold difference, extremely rare. It's really rare to see a thousandfold difference in biological systems, especially when, in biological systems that the body is used to seeing, like copper, manganese, and zinc, where we have mechanisms to handle those excesses. So, if there, you know, truly was a thousandfold difference between the infants in South Carolina versus Butte, there would be some noticeable adverse defects. I mean, there would be stillbirths. I mean, there would be, you would be able to spot it as soon as birth occurred. But those weren't noticed in the South Carolina data, in the South Carolina infants. You know, they said that they were normal presentation. I'm going to just briefly mention arsenic and lead. They did analyze, some studies analyzed for arsenic and lead. However, there were, in the South Carolina dataset, there was really, they were all non-detects, so it's real hard to make a comparison between, you know, on this, however, you know, the Butte data is in there, in the range, it may be, you know, slightly higher. However, we don't know, you know, what, you know, slightly higher means for myconium. It's not like where, you know, within the urine, or the blood, or the hair, where we have a benchmark, and we can say, you know, if you're a little bit high above this, you know, there may be concern. There's just not that benchmark for myconium. And that's one of the reasons why really CDC doesn't collect that as a biological matrix. Lead, we can just really go through, again, the, the health study really addresses, I think, the lead biological monitoring. The McDermott study, they just had one detect. It was within the range. Some of the papers are higher, some are lower. It's hard, because some of these papers are coming from third-world nations where they're still using leaded gas, so it's hard to do a comparison for lead on some of these studies. So, you know, that's kind of a caveat on that. Where are we now? EPA has requested additional information from the study group. We requested raw laboratory output, machine output, from both the myconium, or both the Butte and the Columbia group. The Butte researcher was prompted and responded, and has provided us with that material. We haven't heard from the South Carolina researchers, whether or not we'll get that underlying data. The reason why we request that, it's something we normally do, especially when you see these huge differences between, you know, two groups. So, one of the other problems between, for kind of in the study design of this, is all the materials from Butte were run on one machine. All the materials from South Carolina were run on a different machine, and they're comparing. The better study design would have been to mix them up, to where if there's a problem on one machine or in one location, it doesn't affect all that group's results. So, you don't know if, you know, if you don't mix up the different samples between the two, become blind between them, it's hard to tell if there may have been an error, because, you know, if there's an error, you know, you may end up with, you know, a similar result. So, it's something the EPA regularly does, you know, is to look at the quality assurance, quality control of the laboratory. Like I said, Butte had shared their laboratory output. In the beginning, we requested archived samples that they may have for the myconium samples. We may not really pursue this. It's just, you know, and it's been tossed around, you know, does the health department need to start thinking about doing a myconium study, or does EPA need to look at myconium? Is this something we need to look at further? I think the evidence is pretty clear that a myconium study at this point, and really at any point, would not be a fruitful effort. I think there's better things that time, resources, money can be spent on, for essentially two reasons. I think the data shows, copper, manganese, and zinc, Butte's right there with the rest of the world, where you would expect it. South Carolina, it's uncharacteristically low. Don't know why, hadn't seen the data, so we're not sure. It's so low, in fact, that ATSDR reached out to the health department, state and local, in South Carolina, to let them know, hey, if these results are true, the infants in Columbia, South Carolina may have a nutritional deficit. There may be something wrong, so, you know, you might want to look at that. And so, that's kind of been activated. The, unfortunately, you know, the South Carolina study area is not a superfund, it's not under EPA authority, so we went through ATSDR, who went through their regional offices. And I'm sorry, I'm running long, guys. Couple more slides, and then I'll let you go. EPA's interpretation, like I said, there's no established reference level, there's no benchmarks for us to look at, you know, at what point and what level do metals concentrations equal adverse health effects in the infant. Butte is right there, really where we would expect. The South Carolina data is low, and just at this point, don't know why. Other reviews of the McDermott, and I think this is like my second to the last slide. ATSDR, as you may know, issued a letter to Butte Silver Bow and DPHSS in December, talking about how they did not concur with the statement of potential public health emergency. DPHSS is conducting a letter health consult under the ATSDR co-op program. That's supposed to be due, you know, hopefully towards the end of February. And they're looking at it from a different way. They're looking at giving the levels of metals in Butte, and what we know that the body can take, you know, what's the recommended levels, you know, in vitamins, you know, that the FDA says that you need of copper. Could you even ingest enough soil to equal just the recommended daily level? Not a level that would be toxic. The answer in short is no. You would have to be eating handfuls of dirt daily just to reach a level even approaching what you would get for copper in your vitamins. And Montana Resources had hired subject matter experts and conducted an independent review and wrote an external memo on that, and EPA had no participation in that at all. DPHS then performed a cursory evaluation of the quality control, quality assurance of the laboratory data, and, you know, for the Butte in the Montana Tech portion. And, you know, what I can say is, you know, I think the Butte data, I think, you know, there may be some minor problems with it here and there, you know, if we were to get nitpicky, but when you look across the breadth of the literature, it's right there where we would expect it to be. And so, for the statement of, you know, potential public health concern that the Butte children are being exposed to these levels of metals that are associated with adverse health effects, we just don't see support for that statement. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Charlie. Nikia? Any questions for EPA personnel?
Can I have a, just a closing remarks?
Sure, go ahead, Nikia.
Thank you. Mr. Palmer, members of the board, I appreciate the time here you gave us. You know, with the, with the statements like potential public health emergency, Butte's babies' myconium a thousand times greater than South Carolina, and a thousand times greater than other reference studies, referenced studies in their study, right? So, we got the MERRIQ, and Aziz, and Turker. Now, I'm no epidemiologist, toxicologist, but I can pick up these papers, these three papers, and look at the numbers, because I'm a numbers guy, and I can compare them to what we've seen in the Butte lab data. And what I see is they're comparable, right? So, I would encourage you to look at those references for yourselves. With that said, Charlie had mentioned it, EPA has a very strict and thorough quality assurance, quality control process when it comes to validating data. We have a process to determine if it's enforcement quality data or screening level data. You know, there are some issues with the Butte lab data. However, you know, I think we can consider it screening level data, and comparing it to these other references, you know, it is comparable, aside from the Columbia data. And then finally, I just want to say, we will continue to try to coordinate with the authors of the study, work with them. Like Charlie said, we have given them our review of their study. We haven't heard back, back from them yet on that, but, you know, in the end, if, if they don't respond or see what we're seeing, and we can have that discussion to figure out what's going on with the Columbia data, EPA is going to take the next step. And the next step really, to me, is to talk to the journal, talk to the article, and get that, get the article retracted. It's, in my mind, it's not fair to the Butte community.
Okay, thanks, Nikia. Any questions in the council? Commissioner Sorge.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. General, and thank you.
General, thank you very much, it was highly interesting. I guess my, just my one question is, typically, you know, you said you looked at all these different studies, and who funds these different types of studies? Are they, like, who would have funded the study in Butte?
From what I understand, and, you know, I can't speak to the researchers, but I believe it was funded by Montana Tech in South Carolina, they self-funded. The, this was, they called it a cross-sectional pilot study. It was to, I think the initial thought was to do, they only analyzed 15 infants in Butte and 17 in South Carolina. It was, I think, the purpose of this initial study was to gather some data and then use that data to support a grant application to a federal agency.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Well, thank you, it sounds like great news, our babies will be able to grow up and be cowboys.
I think it is great news.
All right, thank you. Next, we'll go into section two, the consent agenda. A, committee reports, one through four. B, communications, one through 23. Is there any segregations or friendly amendments? Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive, I would like to segregate item number 11, that's 2020-60.
Commissioner Olson?
Thank you, Chief Executive, I'd like to segregate communication number 10, number 2020-58.
Any further segregations? Seeing none, Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive, this time I move to approve the consent agenda, A, one through four, and B, communications, B, one through 23, with the exception of item 10, 2020-58, and item 11, 2020-60.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the consent agenda, A, one through four, and B, one through 23, exclusive of number 10 and number 11. Is there anything on the question? Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk please record the vote?
Eleven yay and zero nay.
Motion carries. Next, we'll go to communication number 10, number 2020-58. Dan Olson, Commissioner, District number five, requesting Council of Commissioners schedule the economic mill levy presentations on Tuesday, February 18th, and Thursday, February 20th, 2020, from 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM. The presenters will be allowed a 10-minute presentation every 15 minutes for the mill levy. Commissioner Olson.
Thank you, Chief Executive. What I would like to do on this is, even though we could concur and place on file, since these are happening over the next week or so, to hold this in the committee of the whole pending the completion of the presentations at that time.
And you want to concur with scheduling?
And I-
You want to schedule them, though, correct?
Yes, I want to schedule them for the 18th and 20th. They're actually going to run until 8:00 PM. So there is a slight correction there, so.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion made and seconded to concur in the question, communication 2020-58, and hold the communication in committee of the whole until after the presentations. Is there anything on the question? Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Clerk, please record the vote.
Eleven yay and zero nay.
Motion carries. Next, we'll go to communication number 11, 2020-60. Dinette Gleason, Finance and Budget Director, requesting Council of Commissioners time on the February 12th, 2020, Council of Commissioners' agenda for a presentation to allow for Pat Bird, partner with Newland and Company, PC, and the Finance and Budget Department, to present the fiscal year 2019 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, CAFR, and the federal schedule of awards. The presentation will include the audit findings and the management responses for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2019. Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Dinette Gleason asked me to move this up a week, because she wasn't going to be totally prepared on the 12th, so I would make a motion to concur and refer communication 2020-60 to the committee of the whole with the revised schedule for the 26th of February, 1920, or 2020.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to just change the date to the 26th. Mrs. Gleason, would you like to comment?
Oh, there she is. Chief Executive Palmer, Commissioner Shaw, thank you for segregating this. I did talk to Commissioner Shaw earlier today, kind of got a quick conversation, so just to clarify, it's actually complete, but we've chosen to move the date to February 26th, because looking at your agenda, on February 12th, it's going to be very comprehensive. You have a couple other presentations that night and a lot going on, so we figured to do justice for those presentations and this presentation, it was best to move ours. But if you want to look at the financial statements, they've been posted to the website. The only thing that is not out there are the findings and management discussion of those recommendation, audit recommendations, just because we think it is best to come before you first, before we post them out there. But if you have any questions, please feel free to contact myself, or Karen Hassler, or Lucy Hanson, in the Finance and Budget Department, and I would direct you again to the website to pull the financial statements, and really refer you to the Management Discussion Analysis section, because there's a lot of information in there that kind of gives you an overview, and maybe in preparation of the 26th, the night of the 26th, we can have even further discussions. So, thank you, Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Dinette. Any questions for Dinette? Seeing none, we do have the motion made and seconded to hold this in committee of the whole until the 26th presentation. Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will clerk please record the vote?
Eleven yay and zero nay.
Motion carries. Next, we'll do the one we suspended the rules for, which is communication 2020-73. This is Communication for Public Works Director, Mark Neary, requesting council authorize the Chief Executive to sign amendment number one to the agreement with Water and Environmental Technologies regarding the storm water master plan. Mr. Neary.
Chief Executive Palmer, counsel, for the record, I'm Mark Neary, Public Works Director. Just to clarify, Water and Environmental Technologies never asked to extend the termination date, it was my office in Public Works. In the budget, there's a line item for professional services for stormwater. We had an MS4 audit at the beginning of the year, and there was a lot of preparation, and it was a four-day audit where we had to have professional services with us, and the response letter and everything, so we kind of dipped into the professional service budget a little deep, and all we did was ask to extend the termination date till June of 2021. It won't stop the work, but it'll just stop it right now till we get into the next budget year.
Anything on it? Mr. Fisher?
Thank you, Chief Executive Palmer, thank you, Mr. Neary. Will this be something that's in the next budget? And what will, I mean, is this continuation, or, I mean, what's the finance, where's the money at here?
Commissioner Fisher, the total bill was $136,000 total, nothing will change. There will be no additional costs. All we did was just kind of, we wanted to just slow down the process, because we were using up a lot of the professional services out of the stormwater.
Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Chief Executive Palmer. So the $136,000 was budgeted in the 2020 budget, will just roll over into the 2021 budget.
Commissioner Fisher, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, for clarification, you know, we collect the stormwater fee from every resident, and so there's a budget every year, but they use too much on the audit this year, so they just want to hold off until next year, is when we have budget authority to pay for it, so. Okay? Did we, make a motion? Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive, at this time, after that explanation, thank you, Mark, I would move to concur with communication number 2020-73 and place this on file.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to concur in the recommendation in communication 2020-73 and place the communication on file. Is there anything on the question? Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will clerk please record the vote?
Eleven yay and zero nay.
Motion carries. Next, we'll go to communications to be read and acted upon. Number one is communication number 2020-50, Charlie O'Leary, 3060 Beef Trail Road, requesting Council of Commissioners to pass a resolution for a question to be placed on the June 2nd, 2020, local election. The question should be whether the voters of Butte Silver Bow wish to reauthorize the imposition of the economic development levy as defined in MCA 90-5-112 for another four years. Mr. O'Leary?
Chief Executive Palmer, members of the council, County Attorney Joyce, and Colleen, thank you for the opportunity. My name is Charlie O'Leary, 3060 Beef Trail Road, and thank again for the opportunity to come and speak again about the economic development mill levy. This letter before you is only a continuation of the discussion that we had last May on this very subject. And at that time, we had slightly different concerns, and we did have a petition out there, which we had about 300 signatures on, and fortunately, we didn't have to submit that petition to you, because there was a change of, a turn of events there that helped us be satisfied with that situation. The petition pretty much asked you to just stay the course, which was to ask for proposals, go through the process, as Commissioner Olson outlined, and go ahead and make awards of money to the successful applicants. The other part of the petition mentioned having to do with, you know, stay the course until such time that this question could be brought again in front of the voters to do a continuation on it. I'll give you a little bit of history. This whole business was created by some enabling legislation by the state of Montana, way back in early 1990, I think, might have even been 89, and that was the legislation that allowed counties to implement sort of a economic development mill levy. This process started way back then, it was voted on a number of times, initially, and a number of times after that, by the voters to continue implementing and assessing this levy during the 90s and the 2000s. Now, since, the last time it was voted on was 2008, for a period of time, and during the 2010s, and nothing has really happened. The process has changed. We haven't gone to the voters to see what they think about this. It was simply implemented through the other part of the law, which allows you to just simply levy the tax. And so I believe it's time that we kind of go back and take a little check with the voters on this one. This thing has passed in the past by everywhere from 54% up to 65%, so there's some variation there. Couple times, we asked them, asked the voters for the question about who should manage this, that passed handily. We asked them one time for a raise, and they said, no, we'll let you keep implementing it, but we're not going to give you a raise to a two-mill levy. And so again, it's been, this should have come up for another vote of the public in 2012, if we were keeping to that kind of four-year business. That didn't happen, not quite sure why. It was just handled, I guess, by a letter from Karen, or Dinette, or somebody in 2013, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19. It was never brought back before the public for a vote. The opportunities for that vote would have been in 2012, 14, 16, any year we had a June vote, I guess. And so we've missed out that, those opportunities a number of times. And so again, this seems like a good thing to go back to the voters and see, you know, what they would like to do. Times have changed, we've spent about three-quarters of a million dollars of the taxpayers' money over the last 10 years, fair amount, they might have some opinions on that, good or bad. So, the other day, I was talking with my son about this very thing, and his favorite pastime is to be the devil's advocate with dad, and he likes to purposely challenge everything that I think and do. I think he does that to try to keep my brain sharp. But he asked me, he says, well, Dad, are you at all afraid that if this is put on the ballot, that it might fail? Afraid? Am I afraid of what the voters might do, what they might tell us? Am I afraid of what the outcome might be from the citizens of this county who are paying the bills? And the answer is, no, I am not afraid of that. It would be, it would be sad, I guess, if this thing failed, and projects like the Urban Forest Board, and Henri Ra, and the Mining Museum, they maybe wouldn't have a source of some funding. Well, there's, that would be sad, but I am not afraid of that. And the reason is, because as we heard tonight from the scientists here, and from Mark Thompson, the important thing is getting to the truth of the matter. We want to find out the truth, just like scientists do. And over the last 10 years, it's been, I guess, somewhat guesswork. We just have assumed that the public wants to pay this money into economic development. We don't know that for sure. But, so now we want to know the truth. I have great confidence in the voters and the taxpayers of this county to give us the absolute truth, and what they really want. And the reason I say that, and I always like to come up here and tell you a few stories, but there's been a number of things over the last 20 years that I've witnessed up here, having to do with taxes. And way back in the day, and Dave's probably the only one that will remember this, so we had an unfortunate situation, a mysterious mattress fire over at the jail, and rendered the building unusable, and so we had to ship all of our inmates down to Warm Springs. And following that, there was this great debate, lasted, I don't know, a year, over what we were going to do for a new jail, or how are we going to manage the inmates, and all that. And Dave and I, and a couple of other commissioners, we spent many, many hours trying to find a location of where we could build a new jail. And for one reason or another, this, every one of those locations was dismissed. We couldn't build a jail there, couldn't build a jail. And it got to be quite contentious in the community. And that went on and on, and we were just at this impasse, until the citizens of this county developed a citizens' initiative. And that was a battle royale as well. But the citizens' initiative people gathered thousands of signatures, and were able to take that to the clerk and recorder's office, have those verified, and got the citizens' initiative on the ballot. Citizens on the ballot. And it passed handily, and the point of that initiative was, we want a jail in Butte that is operated by Butte Silver Bow, and is located in uptown Butte. And once that initiative passed, well, lo and behold, the architects said, we've got good space right out, right out back here, where we can build a jail. There was no problem then. And we can redo the law enforcement, or the old jail into your new LEA. And so the voters passed for the money, they solved the problem, and now we have this great jail, a little undersized now, we didn't know about meth in those days, but now we've got a little overpopulation going on. So that was one issue where the citizens and the taxpayers came to the rescue, and I gained a lot of faith in confidence and respect for the voters. Another example is the archives. We went to the voters on that, and we said, you know, can we have $7 million, I think it was? They saw the wisdom in that, they voted in favor of it, they gave us the money, and look at the, talk about an economic- And look at the, talk about an economic development asset, the archives. We have people coming from all over the world to do their family roots stuff. Then we had the ladder truck issue. That was a million bucks. John Shaken said, "You must have been here then on that." And we got some good use out of that ladder truck ten days ago. And then there was the pool issue. And we went to the voters with the first pool plan and a price tag, and they said, "Well, maybe, but maybe not." And they sent the proponents back to the drawing board. They said, you know, "Work this, rework this over, come back," which we did. And, or you guys did, I wasn't part of that, but then they said, "Fine, that's a good plan, and we'll pass it." So, the voters in this, in this community are very generous with their money, school issues, all these various bond issues, and they are to be trusted, they are to be trusted a hundred percent. If there's one thing we learned tonight from all the discussion on this last presentation is that it's good to operate with facts and with the truth. And you can see the great debate in that thing about the ways of finding the truth. Mark Thompson said, "We want to be operating not on somebody's opinion, or bias, or the flavor of the day, we want to operate on facts." And that's what I think you are seeking here, I hope you're seeking, the facts of what the voters, taxpayers of this county really want to do with this economic development mill levy. The thing I like about scientists is they'll come up, like one of them said, with a hypothesis, and then they come up with an experiment. And the beauty of good science, scientists, is that they don't care, they're not afraid of the results. If their hypothesis proved right, that's fine, if it's proved wrong, that's fine. They are seeking the truth, and they are not afraid. And I'm hoping that none of you are afraid of the results of a mill levy vote. This made me think earlier today of that famous line in A Few Good Men where Nicholson says to Tom Cruise, "You can't handle the truth." And I know all of you are not a bunch of Tom Cruises that are afraid of the truth. You are not. And so, I hope you embrace here the wisdom of the voters, and as your prayer says, "Let your deeds best serve your fellow citizens." So, I hope you will concur with my request there, we get this on the ballot. The other thing I'm hoping is that by having this on the ballot, it will also generate some discussion in this community about economic development. We're all in this thing together, and the more we include the citizens in those discussions, it's not just up to Karen Burns in her office and BLDC and your committee, it's not just up to them, it's, the whole community needs to get in the discussion on economic development. So, as your prayer says, "Let your deeds serve your fellow citizens," and I will be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Charlie. Any questions for Charlie? Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Chief Executive Palmer. Charlie, thank you, I appreciate your input. I will support your communication, but I will also state that I'm kind of with your son. I think you better hope for the best, but plan for the worst if this goes on the ballot because I think the taxpayers of Butte Silver Bow are about done paying for fire ladder trucks and pools and things like that, just with the people I've visited with. But I'll support it because I think the people should make the decision. But I hope for the best, and we should plan for the worst because this may be the end of the economic development mill levy. Thank you.
Anything further questions, Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Thanks, Charlie, for reminding me of last year, our discussions about this. So, I guess my first question is timeline. What do we have as far as a timeline? I was going to ask county attorney, are we, if we wanted to do something like this, what does that look like as far as a timeline goes? What are the steps?
As your chief executive members of the council, I believe we're right on the money. If you look at some of the past resolutions that were approved by this council, it's right about this time. Basically, you have to send it to county attorney Joyce and have her prepare a resolution, which, as you know, has a couple of readings up here, that would come back and be in time for that, for clerk and recorder to get that on the ballot. But I would want to stress this, that it's, I think it's important for you to get this done now for the June election rather than the November election. For this reason, if it passes in June, you know exactly what you have to work with in your budgeting. You know it's there. If it goes to November, it could cause a problem for you. We have time now. And the other thing, for Commissioner Fisher, if it went on the November election and everybody's just got their tax statement, that could not be good, yeah. So, and I hope it passes, I do hope it passes because, as you know, the tree board, we've benefited from it, and everything I care about in this town has benefited, and you've had some really good proposals and entrepreneurs coming forth, and it's, it has some real value.
Did I answer your question? I got a follow-up? County Attorney Joyce, did you want to add to that timeline question?
Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner Shaw, so Mr. O'Leary's accurate that it can be either at the primary election or the general election, but specifically, it's, the law states that it has to be held, it may not be held sooner than eighty-five days after the date of the order of resolution. So, I think the primary is set for June second. I believe eighty-five days before that, if I did my math right, is like March ninth. So, I think your resolution would have to be passed probably at the March fourth meeting because March ninth is a Monday, and that would be your last regular meeting before, to meet the eighty-five-day timeline. So, anyway, if you, you would have time to introduce it and refer it to the judiciary and get it back to the council in the regular process and pass it by March ninth. March fourth, I guess.
Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you for one last question, and that is, I just want to make it clear, especially to the newer members of our commission, the council, I mean, is that there is no extra expense if we have an election going on when we add this on. It doesn't add any extra expense. If we have a special election like we have for the swimming pool, for example, it can get pretty spendy, so I just want to make sure everyone understood that there is, there is no extra expense. Is that correct, Eileen?
Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner Shaw, yes, I mean, you are allowed to do these kind of elections by mail, but since this is being asked to be done during an election year, then it would just be part of the ballot that's prepared.
Okay, thank you.
With the overall, other offices and other ballot issues that might be on the ballot for this election term.
Any further, Commissioner Olson?
Thank you, Chief Executive. Charlie, is this a solution in search of a problem? Is there a problem?
Mr. Chief Executive, members of the council, Commissioner Olson, well, I think I outlined the problem. And the problem is the public and the voters and the taxpayers, the people that pay the bill, have not been included in this process since two thousand and eight. That's a problem for me, having witnessed what had taken place the previous twenty years, that there was regular votes, that we had the courtesy to ask the taxpayers permission. This is an optional tax. This is an optional thing. And it takes, I think, courtesy by this body, the people who elected you, to ask them if they want to pay, continue to pay this. And so... I'm not sure if I've answered your question or not, but I think it is a problem.
Follow-up, Commissioner Olson?
Thank you. So, there's a lot of optional things that are on, in the budget. Should we bring all of those up before the voters every election? I guess, I don't know why we need to vote on this one. State law says we can approve it as the governing body, and we can also, I know the discussion before was, could we give all the money back to BLDC? Both of those are within the Montana statutes to allow this governing body to do that. I just don't know that there's a reason that we need to bring it up. I think just because we did it for twenty years, and we haven't done it for ten, I don't know that we need to bring it back up. That's my thought on it, but...
Commissioner Fredrickson?
Thank you, Chief Executive Palmer. Thank you, Mr. O'Leary, for the history on it. Are we, do you think we'd be crazy to seek additional funding into the, a second mill? Or, I guess, would you advise us to have that option on the ballot as well as yes or no?
Mr. Chief Executive, members of the council, Commissioner Fredrickson, we did try that once because we were actually having so much success with the one mill, or it's a little bit more than a mill, actually. And we thought, boy, there's, there were so many applications and so much good coming out of it, we thought, why don't we, why don't we ask them for a hundred thousand? Which, and that's the election I referred to where we had a two-part, two-part question. One was, shall we redo it? And number two, would you give us more money? And they said, "Yeah, you can redo it, but..." "No, no, 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 we're giving you a raise on this one." So, but that could be, that could, you could do that, you could include this in the resolution. You could also, you could also ask the question as we did way back when, having to do with the management of it. You could ask the public in this resolution, in this vote, "Should we pass it, and should we then give it all to BLDC?" You could do that. Or you could, the question before was, had to do with the management of it, and the voters at the time said, "We want the county to manage it." That was, was the change. But you could put anything you wanted in this resolution on the ballot. You have multiple questions, and, okay.
Follow-up, Commissioner Fredrickson?
I just want to thank you, Chief Executive, and thank you, Mr. O'Leary. I think that, I mean, me personally, I'm not worried about it going to the voters, I'm fine with that, it seems to make sense to me, but I would like to see all the options on the table, and we'll see where we, where we stand.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yeah, I would just like to remind this committee that Mr. O'Leary told us, it's gone before the public a number of times, and they've said yes every time. So, do we just keep throwing it at them until they deny us? There's lots and lots of positive stuff that comes out of this bill levy, and I don't see the reason on having the public keep voting on something that they've already told you yes on. Like Mr. Olson said, is there a problem? Is there something here you're not telling us why you want to bring this up? Or this mill levy does lots of positive things for the community, and the public has voted on it a number of times like you spoke. So, why do we keep wanting to bring it back until they maybe deny you? Is that what you're looking for?
Commissioner, or Chief Executive? Commissioners and Commissioner Dan? No, I mean, if you are suggesting that I have some scurrious motivation here for trying to put this on, then I would take serious issue with that, if that's what you are saying. This has not been before the voters. One time, it only passed by fifty-four percent. One time, it passed by sixty-five percent. That doesn't mean that it's, it might pass by fifty-one this time. These are the people who pay the bills. And maybe they are tired of it, maybe they aren't. I think it's time to do a little mid-course check here. It hasn't been voted on since two thousand and eight.
Follow-up, Commissioner Callahan?
I don't know of anybody else, maybe somebody else in the council can say that they've heard of somebody that's complained and wants to vote this down, but I don't know of anybody that's out there that's asked to have this brought before the public. When we were here a year ago, there was several people that signed your thing because they were in positive, the way it was going to be spent, it was nothing to do with whether they wanted it or not.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive, and members of council, and Charlie, thanks for putting this in. I do, I do agree, I'm fine with it going to the voters. If, you know, us, our job here is to, you know, do what's right for our town, for the people elected us in these positions. At that point, if we put on the ballot, we just need to be good salespeople and, you know, show the positive, what this has done for the community, what it's going to do for the community. All funds that we've given out, I'm sure we haven't, the funds haven't been perfect there, but there's been a lot that really affects a lot of things that happened, so if, if we can't promote that good amongst the twelve of us to show how awesome it is for our town, then we're really bad at our job, or the voters really didn't want it. So, I mean, definitely like where Commissioner Fredrickson's going to, to, you know, maybe there's a line where we can get some more money because we could definitely use more money too as well, so... I mean, if anything, we got to hit this at a positive run, and I can't see it not passing. Thank you.
County Attorney Joyce, did you want to comment on the multi-question ballot issue?
Mr. Chief Executive, so essentially what the election is supposed to consider, the law says the governing body shall pass a resolution to impose a new levy, increase the mill levy, or exceed the current statutory mill levy that you're allowed under your... Mill cap? Can you explain that a little better? But, and so, then you're also supposed to explain the specific purpose if you're asking for more, for what the additional money would be used for, and either the specific amount of money that you want to raise, or the approximate number of mills you want to impose, or vice-versa, the specific number of mills to be imposed and the approximate amount of money to be raised. And you're supposed to tell what, say whether you want the levy to be permanent or a duration of limit on the levy. And you have to explain a statement of the impact of the election on a home valued at a hundred thousand dollars, or, yeah, and a home valued at two hundred thousand dollars. So, you have to put that in your resolution and on your ballot, and, let's see, then, it just says, "If the majority vote on the question are in favor of the additional levying, the governing body is authorized to impose the levy in either the amount or the number of mills specified in the resolution." So, I think I was a little bit confused about whether or not we're actually imposing a new levy, but as was alluded to earlier, the two ways that you can do this is to submit the question, the mill levy, to the qualified voters, or approve the mill levy by a vote of the governing body. So, I think since, over the last several years, we've approved it by a vote of the governing body, and I think the last time probably that it went to the voters, there was, I'm assuming, a timeframe in two thousand and eight, that it was supposed to be maybe four years is what Mr. O'Leary's indicating. So, I guess, if you're, you could say that it is a new mill levy in terms of having the question answered by the voters because that four-year thing expired in two thousand and twelve. So, if the voters are going to vote on it, it's a new mill levy in terms of that process. It's not a new mill levy because over the other years, you've done it by a vote of the governing body, but I guess it's a new mill levy from what was approved in two thousand and eight. So, anyway, I think you just have to decide whether you're just saying that you want to impose the levy... to impose the levy as it's, has been set already over the last several years, whether you want to increase it, or whether you want to exceed your statutory cap, which I don't think you want to do that. But anyway, like I said, you have to also decide if you are going to ask that it be increased, what that additional money is going to be used for, and specify how much it will impact those home values. And the duration, whether you want it for four years or permanent, or whatever term.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. On that note, too, we don't want to raise it. We've been raising too many things. So, kind of maybe get what you get. Don't throw if it might be a good idea. But I, when I said raise more money, I like where you're going. We need to find other ways to get more money on other things, but I think this one, if we put it on and raise it, we might not get it. So, I changed my mind very quickly. Other monies we can get out there again would be the bed tax, if we raise that from a dollar to three, but that's another discussion.
Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I just want to emphasize that, to me, the spirit of the original ballot that was approved and was that, number one, the voters would mandate it, and number two, that would be revisited every four years. We haven't done it for 12 years. And so, my thinking is that because the spirit of that original ballot has not been met, and I think that, I feel confident that if we put it out there, number one, we're kind of fulfilling what was originally meant to be. And I feel very confident that the county will see that we have done a lot with these monies. They've been very productive. They've, you know, the value added has been immense, I think. So, I would, at this time, make a motion to concur with Communication 2020-59 to pose the question to the voters, to whether they wish to reauthorize, I'm not sure if that's quite, quite the right word, the continuation of the economic development mill levy as defined in MCA. Is it 90-5-112?
Second. We have a motion made and seconded to concur in the request in 2020-59 and place the communication on file.
Would we keep that on the, I wonder if we'd keep that as a placeholder?
Hold it in committee of the whole.
Yeah, and hold it in committee of the whole. Thank you.
On the question, Commissioner Anderson?
Thank you. On that initiative, on that ballot measure, do you want any kind of timeframe for a rediscussion on it?
Oh, I think that we should probably continue with the original plan was every four years.
I'd say four to 10. I was thinking four to 10. Six would be a good compromise.
I was going to concur with Charlie's communication, which did ask for the four.
Did it cover the four in there? I'm fine with it then. Thank you.
Commissioner Sorge?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I guess this question is for Eileen. Eileen, would this have to be referred to judiciary first? Should the motion state to refer to judiciary to be?
Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner Sorge, basically, it doesn't have to be referred to the judiciary for me to go ahead and prepare and introduce the resolution, but after the resolution is introduced, it would be considered by the judiciary committee.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Chief Executive Palmer. So, are we going to get the resolution that was in 2008 and use that same format? Is that what we're doing, or?
Most likely.
Yes.
I'm not going to recreate the wheel. Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner Fisher, that I would definitely intend to review that, and if it meets the purposes, then yeah, that's the template that I would use.
Thank you.
Anything further on the question? Commissioner Olson?
Before we vote on this, I'd like to have it restated as you'd like it presented, please.
My motion is to concur with Communication 2020-59 to put on the ballot, asking the voters to, yea or nay, I guess, to reauthorize the imposition of the economic development mill levy as defined in MCA 90-5-12, and have it revisited every four years. How's that? Have a second.
Do you understand the motion, everyone?
Does that make sense?
Concur in the request.
And hold it in the committee of the whole.
Nothing further on the question? County Attorney Joyce?
I just have a clarification. You're asking that the duration of this particular request on this ballot issue is for four years, right? Not to do it every four years after that? Because the statute basically says that you're supposed to indicate the duration of the levy. And so, you want this resolution to say that this duration would be for four years, right?
Okay. Everyone understand? Clear as mud?
Clear as mud.
Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Clerk, please record the vote.
Okay, we have nine yea and two nay.
Motion carries. Next, we will go to Section 4, Ordinances and Resolutions, referred to judiciary. Number one, Resolution Number 2020-06. Section 5, Ordinances and Resolutions for Final Passage. Number one, Council Bill Number 2020-01, Ordinance 2020-01. Will the clerk please read the title?
Council Bill Number 2020-01, Ordinance Number 2020-01. A ordinance amending Title 15 of the Butte Silver Bow Municipal Code, BSBMC, entitled Buildings and Construction, amending Chapter 1504, entitled Building Code, and amending 1505, entitled Adoption of International Energy Conservation Code, amending Chapter 1507, entitled International Existing Building Code, amending Chapter 1512, entitled Sign Code, amending Chapter 1514, entitled Mechanical Code, amending Chapter 1515, entitled International Fuel Gas Code, amending Chapter 1516, entitled Plumbing Code, amending Section 1520, entitled Violation Penalty, and adding new sections to be numbered 1504035, 1504065, and 1516020, and providing for an effective date herein.
Thank you. Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I move to place Council Bill 2020-01, Ordinance Number 2020-01, on final reading and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second. We have a motion made and seconded to pass Council Resolution Number, or Council Bill Number 2020-01, Ordinance 2020-01, on final reading. Is there anything on the question? Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Chief Executive Palmer. I will put a symbolic no vote on this bill for the simple reason, I think the $500 fine for not getting a permit is excessive. I agree with everything else in the bill, but that was something I stated earlier. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything further on the question? Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? The clerk, please record the vote.
We have 10 yea and one nay.
Motion carries. Section 6, Ordinances and Resolutions, Suspension of the Rules for Final Passage, Resolution Number 2020-07. Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. In accordance with the provisions of Subsection 6 of Rule 6 of the Rules and Order of Business of the Council of Commissioners of the City and County of Butte Silver Bow, State of Montana, let's see, that's not that, that's the wrong one. Sorry about that. I move for the suspension of the rules for the purpose of passing Council Resolution 2020-07 by waiving Subsection 7 of Rule 36 of the Rules and Order of Business of the Council of Commissioners, thereby having it considered for advanced passage without reference to the judiciary committee.
Second. We have a motion made and seconded to suspend the rules for the final passage on Council Resolution 2020-07. Is there anything on the question? Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk please record the vote?
We have 11 yea and 0 nay.
Motion carries. Next, we'll vote a Resolution Number 2020-07. Will the clerk please read the title?
Council Resolution Number 2020-07. A resolution authorizing and approving the sale of certain parcels of tax-dated real property owned by the City and County of Butte Silver Bow, State of Montana, and providing for the effective date herein.
Thank you. Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I move to place Council Resolution 2020-07 on final reading and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second. We have a motion made and seconded to pass Council Resolution 2020-07 on final reading. Is there anything on the question? Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk please record the vote?
11, 0, and, I'm sorry, 11 yea and 0 nay.
Motion carries. Now's the time for any public comment on any public matter not on the agenda. Ed?
All right, everybody, I'm 2601 Grand Avenue. For the greater good of the greater community, I just want to clarify that we fully understand that many things are being done in Butte Silver Bow to minimize the exposure to heavy metals. I want you to ask, though, the Health Department relative to the PM-10. Mr. Thompson made the statement that we have brought the PM-10 down below the standard and have made improvements. Most certainly, that is correct. As I understand it, though, the PM-10 is just a particulate. There is no analysis being done until this year for the heavy metals. We had three studies done, where samples were taken in different, or we had one study done where samples were taken in three different locations and analyzed for heavy metals. So, I hope we do not move off the focus of all working together in a holistic manner to minimize the exposure to heavy metals. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Any other public comment on any item not on the agenda? Seeing none, call your attention to calendar of other meetings and events. Commissioner Shaw?
Can I move to adjourn?
A motion made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.